All right.
All right, 7:03. Let's call the meeting of the City of Tonawanda Council to order. Can you please call the roll?
Lo Lannidge.
Yeah.
No Sarah.
Here.
Rowland Stroh.
Here.
Mylum.
Here.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Lord, as we savor our hearts and minds, as we come into this time of fellowship and decision-making, we are humbled by the trust that you have placed in each one of us here for the way that we've been called to contribute to the function of the city, to its livelihood, to its fellowship. We thank you especially on this day that you have just celebrated the birth of this amazing country. Sometimes taken for granted, but then we ask for forgiveness. We know well that this country is the finest country that has ever been. So you have called each one of us to truly be citizens, not just in name, but also in duty and in privilege. So we thank you, O God, for the many ways that this country blesses us, and we especially are grateful for this city for politics and administration, again, where the people are cared for in a way that has justice and peace. We ask too that you would bless this time that we have together tonight. But as we discuss the issues of this day, that we might comply with your will, one will, that will lead the city in the direction that it should go in order to be blessed and in its favor. All these things we ask and pray in the name of Christ are Lord and our Savior.
You may be seated. Bit openings is per your agenda. Communications from city officials and the mayor is per your agenda. Resolution number three is amended from fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand. We also have an additional resolution, resolution number ten, which I will read to you. And I believe it was passed around. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, Madam President.
Okay. So it reads, whereas Article eight of New York Environmental Conservation Law and six NYCRR, Part six one seven, seeker requires state and local government agencies to consider environmental impacts of proposed actions during discretionary decision-making. The proposed rezoning of twenty thirty forty Fillmore is a type one action. The project is a type one action under six seventeen B because of its proximity to historic resources within the city. Whereas the full environmental assessment form and other materials have been submitted for review for the project as required to begin the seeker process and complete the environmental review of the project. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Tonawanda hereby intends to take the title of lead agency pending the notification of all other involved agencies and completion of the required thirty day response period. At this time, we'll now take comments by the public on the resolutions. For those that are joining us virtually, there is a spot for you to raise your hand, and the clerk will call upon you. For those that are joining us in person, please approach the microphone. Mr. Clerk, any, anyone wishing to address the council on the resolutions virtually?
Madam President, at this time, I do not show anyone looking to make any comments on the resolutions.
Hearing nine, let's roll.
Resolution number one by Councilmember Mylum.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Second by Mr. No Sarah.
Resolved at the common council minutes from June twenty first, twenty twenty two, accepted as filed.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number two by Councilmember No Sarah.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it, Madam President.
Second by Mr. Mylum.
Resolved that the residents of Minerva Street between Grove and William Street be permitted to conduct a block party on August thirteenth, twenty twenty two, from six PM to ten PM.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted. Mr. Clerk, I want to make a motion to amend resolution number three from fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam.
Second by Mr. Mylum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number three by Councilmember No Sarah.
Second by?
Second by Council President Cook.
Correct.
Whereas the City of Tonawanda met representatives from the cemetery board on June twenty first, twenty twenty two, and whereas the City of Tonawanda maintains the property located at the city cemetery, and whereas the city entered into an agreement with the cemetery board to provide volunteers to help maintain the city cemetery. And resolved that the common council supports the desire to purchase a shed, tools, and the necessary equipment necessary to enhance the property located at the city cemetery at a cost not to exceed the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Funding fiscal impact, sixteen thousand dollars from ARPA funds.
Madam President?
Mr. Ronsdahl?
I just, I just want to thank Ron Stedner for coming and talking to us at the last meeting, you know, shining a light on some of this and and just for the work that you do in general. Over the time I've been on the council, I've had the opportunity to talk to you many times and see the work that you guys done. And you guys have been doing an amazing work and the love and care that you guys put into this, the work in the cemetery is very commendable. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. And also just thank you to Bob Starb, who's the new chair of the Cemetery Committee, for bringing this light to the council's light as well. I much appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Well said. Any other comments?
I think we, the reason we amended, the reason we amended that to sixteen thousand is because we are adding in a thousand dollars for the banners on Main Street, correct?
Correct.
The hometown heroes.
Correct.
Oh, and I can just add one more thing, because Ron did question this earlier, is this is the fifteen thousand dollars for the shed and the tools in addition to what's been several years ago in trust and agency in the maintenance account for the Cemetery Committee as well. So.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a great work that you folks are doing as volunteers. It's, it's commendable. All the hours that you folks are putting into it, it's, it's great to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. No Sarah. Comment, as Mr. Mylum had said, the additional thousand dollars will be spent on replacing the hometown heroes banners that are on Main Street. There's nine in total. We'll be adding one more for ten. So thank the council for, for doing that as well. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number four by Councilmember Lo Lannidge.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it, Madam President.
Second by Mr. Mylum.
Resolved that the recommendation of the city engineer, Jason J. Lamontico, P.E., that award of the contract for the Delawanda Storm Sewer Investigation be made to Decra Inspections, Inc. at a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand seventy-five dollars. Funding fiscal impact, two hundred thousand seventy-five dollars from the capital budget.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number five by Councilmember Rowland Stroh.
I'll second.
Be it resolved that the Saint Francis of Assisi Church be granted permission to close Adam Street between Seymour and Clinton Street on Saturday, September tenth, twenty twenty two, from nine AM to nine PM for their parish family fun fest.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number six by Councilmember Rowland Stroh.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it, Madam.
Second by Mr. No Sarah.
Resolved that resolution number seventy-four adopted on April fifth, twenty twenty two, be amended to change the location of the COT Neighbors United event for Teen Wars to be held on July eighth, twenty twenty two, and August nineteenth, twenty twenty two. And be it resolved that the COT United Teen Wars for July eighth will now be held at Elmwood Park, and on August nineteenth, the event will be held at Ives Park. And be it further resolved that all other sections of the said resolution shall remain unchanged in full effect.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number seven by Councilmember Rowland Stroh.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it, Madam.
Second by Mr. Mylum.
Resolved that resolution number seventy-three adopted on April fifth, twenty twenty two, be amended to change the location of the COT Neighbors United event, the Pop-Up Playground, to be held on July sixteenth, twenty twenty two, and be it resolved that the COT United Playground, Pop-Up Playground for July sixteenth will now be held at Nyiwanah Park. And be it further resolved that all, all other sections of that said resolution shall remain unchanged in full effect.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number eight by Council President Cook.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to second, Madam President.
Second by Mr. Rowland Stroh.
Whereas a special events application was received by the city clerk from Barbara Goldman of this, for the weekly COT Guitar Jam and Nyiwanah Park Band Shell. And whereas the application was reviewed and commented on by all appropriate department heads to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents. And whereas all the details of the above-named event must be coordinated with Parks Director Amanda Loft and the event chairperson, now therefore be resolved that permission is be granted to hold the weekly COT Guitar Jam at Nyiwanah Park Band Shell on Thursdays beginning July seventh, twenty twenty two, through September twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, from one PM to three PM. And be it further resolved that a certificate of insurance named the city as Tonawanda is additionally insured, being filed with the city clerk no later than July fifth, twenty twenty two.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted. Mr. Ruah? Yes, Mr. Ruah?
Regarding resolution number nine, and if we could just spend a discussion with the Department of Public Works and Parks Department, they're going to utilize, it should say Niagara Street between Main and Seymour. The way it says now, they're going to utilize Main Street to Seymour Street. They don't connect.
We corrected it the first time.
Well, the way it's written in the agenda, we just want to make sure that it's been utilized Niagara Street between Main and Seymour Streets.
Can you just double check to make sure the, the agreement also says that as well? I believe it does, but.
I will check. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ruah. Okay, so we're going to make a motion to amend resolution nine to read the Canal Fest twenty twenty two campus area will utilize Main Street to Niagara Street.
Niagara Street.
Niagara Street to Main Street.
Niagara Street from Main Street to Seymour Street.
Utilize from. Mr. Clerk, did you get that?
Uh, I did not.
Okay.
So utilize.
Niagara Street from Main to Seymour.
Yes, I just, did, did you hear Monica?
So we'll utilize Niagara Street from Main to Seymour?
From Main?
Yes.
Correct. And we want to double check to make sure that that's what the agreement, how the agreement is worded as well. And I think Mr. Ruah was doing just that. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ruah. Do I have a second on the amendment? Second by Mr. No Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, you with me? You have that, right?
Yes, yes, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So resolution nine, sponsored by the council, seconded by the council.
Resolution number nine by the council, seconded by the council. Whereas the common council approved the Canal Fest twenty twenty two agreement at the June twenty first, twenty twenty two council meeting. And whereas there is a need to amend the first sentence of number three of the said agreement to the following. The Canal Fest twenty twenty two campus area will utilize Niagara Street from Main to Seymour for children rides and without the use of any stakes in that portion of Young Street, now known as Canal Street, which lies from Main Street to the back of the city pavilion for the limited use of nonprofit vendors, music performances, and music concessions. Now therefore be resolved that the common council authorizes Mayor White to sign the addendum to the Canal Fest twenty twenty two agreement.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number ten by the council, seconded by the council. Whereas Article eight of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and six NYCRR, Part sixty, six seventeen, seeker requires state and local government agencies to consider an environmental impacts of proposed, of proposed actions during discretionary decision-making. The proposed rezoning of twenty thirty forty Fillmore Avenue is a type one action. The project is a type one action under section sixteen, sec, I'm sorry, under six, six hundred seventeen point four B because of the proximity to this historic resources within the city. Whereas the full environmental assessment form and all other materials have been submitted for review for the project as required to begin the seeker process and complete the environmental review of the project. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Tonawanda hereby intends to take the title of lead agency pending the notification of all other involved agencies and the completion of the required thirty day response period. Funding fiscal impact is not applicable.
Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Lo Lannidge.
Aye.
No Sarah.
Aye.
Rowland Stroh.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted. So resolution eleven. Do we have a motion for executive?
There are motion for executive for particular person personnel.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Mylum. So we have a motion on the floor for executive session for a particular person. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So, Mr. Clerk, if you can pause the recording.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to be pausing the recording to go on an executive. Also, those in the, in the Zoom meeting will be put into the waiting room until the executive session is completed. And then you will be brought back into the Zoom call.
All right, at this time, we'll now take comments by the public following the resolutions. For those that are joining us virtually, there is a spot for you to raise your hand. Please do so, and the clerk will call upon you. For those that are joining us in person, please approach the microphone.
This was all on our deck.
Oh, my goodness.
This is just some of it. We, we're in our seventies. It's hard for us to go and bend over up through my foyer to pick up all the garbage this guy leaves in my air. This was on my deck. This was on my glass table. And now. So we went to, now this is just, we called the police the next night. We also, when we came to our house, came into our house, put our backpack and looked at them. We were telling them, they said he was going to go over and get this person some. Now we haven't checked that. How, as I was talking to the chief there, I'm not trying to make any trouble with my neighbors. I've lived there for forty-two years. I've never had trouble with them. But this guy does not seem to get it. This guy has stopped. We've been away for sometimes like on Fourth of July and come back and seen our houses, a disaster with these things all over. It's not just our house. It's our next door neighbor who moved these nails on the other side. And even like one of my neighbors, like Marianne, on the other side, she's, you need a fire hose for what they've done to you. This is how ridiculous it is. I went up, I screamed at him and stopped. He did a little bit last night, but then continued to do it again. I'm only here because I, I know the regulations. These things are illegal. And I know that the police have their hands full, the fire department has their hands full. But I'm asking you, the council, to deal with this. Tell people that, you know, if you use illegal fireworks like this, you will be summoned. Because I think they believe that the police are so busy that they, they're just going to get away with it. This guy here doesn't care, obviously doesn't care that I've tried talking with him in the past. Should we have to keep tolerating this kind of?
Thank you for your comments. We'll certainly speak to the chief, and I know the mayor will as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hillside Street, Rod, I'd just like to say I agree with you, Rod, watch it, all worse. And, and to be honest with you, I know New York State loosens the regulations on fireworks, but somebody told me today that they can be, some prohibition against what is wrong with the air. And of course, the police are busy. Maybe if someone were put out warning the community next year that it's not going to be tolerated and possibly has the auxiliary police to be on hand, if they could possibly respond to some of this, it was horrible. But when I'm all worse, I think.
I think some of the issue is too, you can go, the ease of availability. I mean, you can go into Topson by whatever you want.
But I think we need to get a definition of what's legal in New York State and what's not, to start us. I think people see it being sold as someone's labor.
They figure they can do it.
There's certain height restrictions. I know that.
Yeah. Well, in any case, the other thing, I'd just like to say, with all due respect, you're agenda calls for you coming to the last resolution where you decided you're going to executive session. And having that is comments by the public about the resolutions. There's probably five or six people that left tonight. My suggestion is that you complete your meeting and then if you want to executive session, give me the comments.
Thank you for your comment. We actually did consult with the city attorney prior to that, and his, his recommendation was to go through the agenda, make the motion for executive session, go into the room, and then come back on the floor, but duly noted, yeah.
If you do the resolution that you're going to go into executive session, you should allow the public comments first, and then you tell the people, don't be able to leave for another person.
Understood. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, is there anyone who's joining us virtually that wishes to address the council?
Madam President, at this time, I do not show anyone from the Zoom call looking to make any comments this evening.
Mr. Mylum, we'll start with you.
Well, first, I'd like to wish my grandmother a happy hundred and first birthday. She celebrated on July first. I, I guess I have to mention her daughter was born on the same day, and she turned eighty. So she'd probably be a little bit upset that I told everybody how old she is, but happy birthday to my aunt as well. It's been pretty quiet up at the, on the hill lately. I haven't had any complaints about Hackett Drive. Other than checking in with the neighbors, it's been very quiet up there. I would, I've been wanting to mention this to, to the residents for many meetings now, but just to draw attention to the bike path crossing at Cranbrook, that the cars do not have to stop there. So if you are on a bike or if you are walking, please make sure, because both sides are blind corners for walkers and bikers in relation to cars. So please make sure that you're exercising pretty, pretty good caution before riding your bike across the street or walking or jogging. I've seen a couple of people almost get clipped there. And it, it is the responsibility of the biker, the walker, to. And it is the responsibility of the biker, the walker, to stop, not the, not the cars. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mylum. Mr. Robyn Strong?
Thank you. Nothing too much. Everything's been pretty quiet. I really, I want to start out by saying congratulations to the mayor on the fireworks event, on a safe, well-attended, good event. You know, and thank you to the rest of our department heads for keeping it clean, keeping it safe as well. I know a lot of work went into that. Um, so I want to say it's great. It's great. I did showcase our Canal Street, put it out there. Uh, I probably, being the IT guy, I've been on Facebook and reading comments a little more than most of you. Um, I realize you can't, you're not going to please everyone. You've got people that were happy with it, people that weren't happy with it, so um, you know, it's going to go that way. Um, just entering my two cents, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it there, and I'm kind of going by what other people said. But in the past, seeing it, um, you know, along the river, um, was always a wonderful thing and always a great tradition. Uh, Niagara Park is kind of the gem of our city. It's an asset to our community. And when we start talking about doing the fireworks, and having a Fourth of July event, um, over the years, and talking about other things, are we, are we looking to attract more people into our city? Or are we doing this as a benefit for our residents in our city? So just keeping that thought in mind, um, now that we have a little more time in place, now that the restrictions with pandemic have ended, um, and as our budget period comes up, you know, in October and November, and we start talking about this, um, maybe that's something we keep in the forefront of our mind is, is kind of come up with a better plan, reconsider, you know, I want to say this to our residents who, when you're listening, we're out there. You know, your feedback is greatly appreciated. I'd love to know more about um, this new location, or if we want to go back to the old location and ask guests for your consideration. And either way, um, I think it's a great idea having it down by the river, something to be said about the picnics that people have at their homes along the river, people coming down there and being able to throw a blanket out on, on the lawn and enjoy it overhead. Um, it's a great thing. So I just want to make that comment, say that was a great, great event out there from everything that I've seen. And, um, you know, as we move forward with the budget to consider, consider what all of our options are, consider budgeting the money into it to pay for the fireworks. I realize, you know, there's talk back and forth on that about nine thousand dollars that we got from donations, fifteen thousand total. Um, you know, in the overall scheme of things, and talking a twenty-five million dollar budget, uh, eleven million of that, that becomes a levy, and you're talking about point oh oh one percent of the budget. So I don't think that's a huge ask when we start moving forward and we put it in there. So um, definitely things we want to keep in our mind and consider as we, as we move forward. Um, beyond that, thank you to our department heads for keeping everything safe and taking care of everything.
Thank you, Mr. Robyn Strong. Mr. No Sarah?
Sure, uh, just to touch on what Sean just talked about, about the fireworks and the location. I'm open to location after we do some kind of analysis of, is it better to close off a third of the streets, having it at the river, or just what we closed off, just having them off the bridge? So we'd have to look at that as well, but I'm open, I'm open to that. I'm not, you know, cutting anything into stone.
And I think it's a great opportunity. Now that you have a basis of comparison on both, it would be something for us to evaluate.
We do. Yep, and, and that's our job to, to explore that. Uh, congratulations to the newly appointed administrative assistant, Sharon Stewart, and our secretary new in the office, but not new, but it's coming back, Judy Kurtsworth. I'd like to congratulate both of those. And the next time we meet will be during Canal Fest. So I just personally want to wish them a very safe, fun, profitable event, and it goes very well for them. And next year, that we hear back from them a lot sooner than, you know, twenty-two days prior to the start of the event. So I wish that to happen for next year, if that happens. And it's great to see some of the progress reports coming in, um, from our clerk, and I read those thoroughly. So thank you very much for those.
Thank you, Mr. No Sarah and Mrs. Lilanich.
Put it right there.
Um, I, I don't. I, I guess, I'm thinking to Cybus for pointing out that we did lose some, some community members this evening that could not stay for, for the duration. But I'm aware that Mr. Oliver Senior was in attendance or planning to be in attendance to speak on behalf of his, himself and some of his neighbors on Syracuse Street about truck traffic. Um, I, I know members, colleagues up here have received, um, direct conversations from Mr. Oliver and others on Syracuse about that issue, about large truck traffic coming on the residential streets, um, and all the things that come with that, the damage and disruption and so forth. Um, please know that all of us have talked to various entities in the city, whether it be directly with the chief of police or the Traffic and Safety Committee and other boards on solutions that have been looked at previously that may have worked or didn't work, and maybe new solutions. And we are open, I know all parties involved are open, to, to hearing creative ideas, any ideas. They're willing to think on those and listen. So please know that that is not something that we are not giving attention to. We, and that is all. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lilanich, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to welcome my new executive assistant. The mayor is Sharon Stewart Bright. She's very good. She learns very, she's a quick study, and she's grown so much in the position that she was in in the six months that we've been in that it was a no-brainer for me, and I'm going to, I want to thank her because she's definitely a bright spot in my office. And also Judy Kurtsworth, she's just a flash in the past, is coming back again, so I'm looking forward to working with her. Um, Ron, thank you for your assistance with the cemetery committee, Bob, and all the work you do for the chair. I think bottom line, once you're done communicating with the unions, you'll do what's best for the city. And I think it'll be a win-win for all of us, so I'm looking forward to that also. Uh, the fireworks, bottom line is enjoyable, safe, and everybody got home, good balance. That was the bottom line. Um, they were enjoyable. I want to thank all the department heads, police, fire, GPW, parks. A lot of work was put into it, a lot of monthly media just put into it, not something just was thrown together. Um, a lot of communication was put in. I saw a lot of blankets thrown out on the grasses, on the concrete. I saw a lot of chairs. It was really a neat thing to see. And we don't walk into something like this blindly. Input is taken, and we will communicate across the board moving forward, and we will have an open line, communication with everybody moving forward to accomplish what we need to do for two thousand twenty-three. And that's it, Madam President.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. There's a few birthdays that I want to recognize tonight, including Councilman Mylum's grandmother, as well as our administrative assistant, Sharon Stewart, who celebrated a birthday. Uh, so happy birthday to the both of you. Um, I want to thank Dale Sukleski and Dale Kokonovich from the Tonawanda Housing Authority. Uh, last week, the mayor and I received a tour of the campus grounds. Uh, we also had the opportunity going into one of the units that was vacant. And, um, certainly there's some great things to come at the housing authority, some events that uh, the tenant reps and the board are planning for the community. Um, and they're also pursuing some pretty significant grant opportunities that will enhance the grounds as well as the units. So I want to thank them both for that tour. Uh, just a reminder that the COT Neighbors United is hosting a bottle-and-can drive this Saturday, July ninth. And the monies that they receive from this drive go to events that support pop-up playgrounds, teen wars, uh, and citywide events. So if you have a chance, they'll be out and about beginning at nine AM. I want to thank the council for their support on resolution three, and thank the city cemetery for all of their efforts. I know when you met with us, uh, some of the conditions were, were very upsetting to all of us. So, uh, thank you to the council for acting very quickly on that. And a few weeks ago, uh, I did the Warriors Walk Wednesdays group, and we had received our history lesson on Main Street. And if you looked up, the hometown heroes banners were, were very faded. Uh, so I worked with our administrative assistant, um, getting the pricing to get those quickly replaced. It's very important that we do that, and I want to thank the city treasurer for his help in making this happen. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Robyn Strong. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody.
At this time, this concludes the common council meeting this evening. Our next meeting will be on July nineteenth, Tuesday. And again, the recording will start at seven PM. Thanks again for joining.